Order, part of the work session anyway. Appreciate you all being here. And so first up on the work session is the discussion of Blue Island Avenue, Ashley Street, drainage improvements, public-private partnership.
Thank you, City Council.
Sure.
Acting President.
Thanks, sir.
I've got with me Larry Smith, who is the Principal Engineer with SE Civil. He represents 68 Ventures, which started out as a pretty straightforward subdivision application on an approximate five-acre tract of property on the west side of Blue Island. And as part of the review process, again, as part of my role as Public Works and looking into the drainage, some concerns were expressed because this property naturally conveys a large amount of drainage, about 19 acres upstream, if I recall. And of course, the design proposed was going to intercept, pick up that water, carry it through the property via pipe versus the natural draw that was in there, and discharge it to where it was naturally going, which happens to be an undeveloped tract of land that's on the north side, about two and a half acres. And kinda as part of our due diligence, then what? Well, that water actually just flows into an unopened right-of-way that is perpendicular to the north end of Ashley Street. And as stated in the memo to you, we have at times of heavy rainfall been called out to Ashley, and the road floods there because there is no infrastructure, there is no pre-existing drainage. And so we expressed our concerns is that even though there are as existing conditions that have been that way for a long time, when you develop, you have to at least be cognizant of downstream impacts, how are you processing that? And this led to Larry and his clients pursuing possibly drainage easements and things across the property, and there was also a gravity sewer consideration. And that led to the actual property owners of that tract to the north entertaining, well, why don't you just buy us out? And then that solves a bunch of problems. And they came back to us and said, listen, we think there's an opportunity here to do more than just what's required for the neighborhood development or the new development, but to introduce a potential for some regional or subregional stormwater management. And Larry had played around a little bit with some conceptual designs and volumes and things of that nature. But the question that was posed to your planning and review staff was that the biggest challenge is, is that we're interested in doing this, but we don't net enough additional lots because this area would be taking up majority by a stormwater management system that yes, would serve the development as a whole, but be addressing downstream adverse effects and everything else. And posed the question, you know, would the city entertain a partnership to address this problem? And again, our response is, is that we can't answer that question, but we can try to get you before the folks that can answer that question. So that's where we are today. I do want to let you just know my position here is I am not an advocate, nor do I think it's a bad thing. I think that it does solve a historical flooding issue, but the challenge here is that at least by any knowledge or memory of public works staff, because of the way Ashley is configured, the houses sit well above the road, even though the street floods, as far as we know, there's never been what we consider real property damage due to flooding that location. But it is a safety and a flooding inconvenience issue when that road is inundated and you can't pass through it, or it would be dangerous to do such. So that's where we are. Larry, I want you to add what you, I kinda just briefly covered it.
Yeah, and I think Richard did a great job of covering the high points. When we were first looking at the design, as Richard stated, we had the subdivision fully addressed, and I think we still could address everything we needed to within the confines of the subdivision. But as we were looking at the sewer, looking at the sanitary sewer, looking at the drainage, first thing that popped into our head was this would be a great location for a regional pond, because we had our community meetings with some of the neighbors, and some of the neighbors were expressing drainage concerns. Most of these were upstream for the community meeting, but then when I went to go to explore the property, one of the neighbors off of Ashley came out and asked what I was doing. And I said, well, I'm just trying to figure out where all this runoff is going, because I need to look at the downstream impacts, I need to get a better understanding of what's going on here. And he's like, well, I can tell you where it's going. And so he described what happens on the larger rain events, because there is no positive true drainage infrastructure there to capture it and then pipe, take it into the pipe system further downstream Ashley. So it comes through that natural draw, it goes through the unopened right-of-way, there's actually some other pipes from adjacent streets that also dump into that adjacent right-of-way, and then it just spills over on the road. I'm really surprised it hasn't undermined the road, but I didn't see any evidence of that right now. But it just overtops the road, and it goes down a fairly steep slope down to existing inlets at the intersection of Ashley and.
Patland.
Patland, yeah. And so we started looking at it and decided, you know, this would be a great opportunity to address several issues. It would help with the concerns of our discharge, you know, we could possibly pull back our discharge point and solve that issue, but we could purchase this property. It's not a piece of property that we can really put lots on. The terrain of it is such that it would not be a good use of the property, but it would be a good use to solve some sanitary sewer issues in the area. Right now, that section of Blue Island is served by either low pressure or septic, so we could run sanitary over from Ashley and get it back up to Blue Island in that area. And then obviously, help with the drainage situation that's currently going there.
And Council, I'll tell you the million-dollar question, and I don't know if it's a million-dollar question, and that is, I don't, there hasn't been a formal request of what the partnership entails, you know. I think what they're wanting is some kind of offset monetarily, and I don't know if Larry is prepared to define that, or I don't mean to put you on the spot, but y'all can't even decide if you want to pursue it unless you kinda know what the ask is.
Yeah. Honestly, I've heard several numbers that come through, because there's so many things in flux right now on the development side, is, you know, they've obviously gone to the sellers, and they've asked the sellers, you know, for a reduction in price because of the issues that they have, they don't have what they think they have. They've also, you know, gone to the people they're purchasing the property from, trying to get all the numbers to work, and haven't turned around to see if they're in the audience or not. But, you know, from what they've told me, they're on the actual subdivision itself, they're not looking to make a profit. Their idea is they're bringing in a higher-end line of homes, and that's where, they've just gotta make the numbers work so they can get the loan to proceed. You know, to be quite honest, we throw out all the cards on the table, the numbers I've heard range from 150,000 to 180,000. Now, that was, I think, where they are currently at.
Is that to get the property purchased, or to purchase the property and?
That would be what the ask would be of y'all. But that is where their numbers currently are without hearing anything different from these property owners, these two property owners. So I think the real question is, is y'all would even entertain it, and then they can start to figure out how to make all the puzzle, pieces of the puzzle fit to where we can help with the drainage issue, help with the sewer issue, and make this work. On the how part, I think the easiest way would be to do a materials type of deal if it worked out for y'all. I think that's, but that's further down the line, I guess.
Council?
Yeah, I met with Larry and the developer, and met with Richard in Beaufort, and we went and looked at the property with Richard and Beaufort. Do you know how many houses that are currently on septic tank would be able to tie into that gravity in that area?
I don't. I don't know if Richard Peterson knows that number or not. Do you know how many?
I think it was the one right next to the subdivision, and then looking at gravity along with Blue Island, probably 300 feet of directions and capture places up front. They have sewer, sewer completely coming up from that subdivision.
How many lots are being discussed, being built there?
For us, 10, 10 lots.
Yeah, and as I told both parties, I don't, you know, to me, that's not a regional, I mean, I can't remember how many acres flow into that, but it's a smaller, I would call it an area detention pond rather than a regional detention area.
I used the term sub-regional.
Okay. We'll go sub-regional.
And on the preliminary numbers, I thought there was 19 acres that was flowing through our point of capture for along the low point of Blue Island. What I haven't looked at is the additional drainage that's coming from the other streets that are dumping into that right-of-way. And so, I mean, we could potentially also capture that runoff, put it into this pond, because there is a discharge pipe. I don't know if y'all noticed it when you walked the property, but there's a concrete flume that just is kinda right now buried under sediment. If you go to the end of that concrete flume, there's a pipe from an upstream street. And so the impacts might be a little bit more, but I don't, I don't wanna throw out numbers that I'm just guessing on. But there is the chance for capturing even more than the 19 acres. But yeah, it's still a sub-regional.
Well, my concern, just listening to what you brought up, Larry, is that there is the potential, at least, some point down the road, it creating issues undermining the street in that area. I mean, and I obviously haven't inspected it, I don't know, I'm taking your word for that, but that'd be something I'd really rely on Richard to be able to address.
Well, and that's kinda the challenge here, is that this condition has existed this way for a long time, and has behaved pretty well. I mean, as far as Public Works, any recent knowledge of having to do any maintenance in that area to either revet with rock or backfill, we haven't had that problem. So, you know, knock on wood, it is, it is what it is, you know. And I think the hard part for me, and I'll just be honest with you, is when I hear a number that is that large, then I start thinking of, if you said you have $180,000 to address drainage issues, would that be the one that I pick? And I don't think the answer would be yes. I think I have a few more hotspots in a town that I would rather direct that same dollar to. That is the challenge, you know, if it was, again, if it was a much significantly smaller number, and there's, you know, the engineering is gonna be taken care of, the construction's gonna be taken care of, and our roles either provide materials or a check, then there may be a little more advantage to that for the city. So that's just, you know, that's, that's just, and again, I think Larry's job is to get with the folks and finally, you know, land on a number that we at least can share with you to say, yeah, we'll consider it, or no, we don't even wanna go there, so.
The number I had in mind was about half of that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Larry, what I'm, I guess you're here tonight to look for something to take back to your people, and sort of give them some idea of what, you know, what my thought would be, is I'm not against helping in this regard personally. But, you know, I think what Richard said, you know, means a lot, and that is, if we're gonna spend 150,000 to 180,000, there are probably places that are more pressing that that money can be spent.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's not a no for me, but it's probably a no with that amount.
Amount, okay.
And, you know, and I don't know what the yes number is, but I think there's probably some more pressing areas that need concern for that amount, at least.
Well, I'll go back to my clients, get them to try to nail down a number, and give y'all something, a hard number that y'all can say yes, it's worth it, or no, it's not worth it.
Yeah, Council, is that seen? Fair?
Sounds good.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Appreciate it. All right, who's up next? Bait shop and overnight parking at the docks, we have Ms. Lynn Mazer.
That sound good.
Seems the more we get into the marina business, the more we learn. And since there's only the three of you this evening, I will let you know that Jack and Kevin dropped in my office early last week, and we had this conversation about these two This is a little convoluted, so bear with me. One of our shrimpers came to us and asked if he could use the old boatyard office building, that's the cement block building, and run a bait shop business out of there. We said, boy, we got some things we need to talk about, and we need to bring to you. Let's start out, first of all, we're heating and cooling the place just to keep it in its bad condition that it's in. We can't do anything with the building except take it down, or use it as-is. So it's empty, we have no use for it. After the first of the year, we'll be coming to all of you with some options for landside use in the marina, one of which includes raising that building and the paint shed. But because the paint shed has a common wall with the bathrooms and the laundry room, we have a number of things that need to be done all at one time. So I don't see these buildings coming down for maybe the next two to three years, because we're talking mobile units, and I know Robert has another idea, and that needs to be discussed as well, but all of that needs to be done at one time. So we're taking down buildings, but we still have the bathrooms and the laundry rooms. That means this building is around for a while. Where bait is concerned, you either have to go heckin' gone north or down to Barnwell. And we've been told that this is a potential service that the city can offer the boaters and the fishermen, without it costing us anything. So it's kind of a nice thing to do. However, anybody that goes into it, first of all, we'd have to bid it out, we know that, and we've advised this individual that it would have to be bid out. We'd also have to have a lease that says, look, you know, maybe it's a year-to-year, because we don't know when or what's going to happen with these buildings, we need to address that, and they need to be prepared for it. These are the things we're dealing with. So I'm here this evening to get your feel on doing this. It's not up to us, I don't think, as a city, to determine whether it's a viable business. This is an entrepreneurial effort, it's up to this gentleman to figure out whether it's something that can be done. I know Jeannie Paradise has told us she'd love to have it, because she fuels up her customers' boats, and she can put bait in there as well. In terms of services to the building, Jay does tell me that we can put a meter for water in there, it'll be a little, little difficult to do, but in the end, the bait has to stay in bay water, so that's not gonna be a big issue. Hopefully, we'll be able to meter the electric use separately, but if not, we've already got electric to the building, we can work out a pro-rated share and build it into the lease. But I need some input from all of you, and, you know, your thoughts on it, and most especially, what the heck we would charge and rent?
So where is the building that's being used?
It's that cement block building that's next to the paint shed, right there as you come down Sea Cliff, that first thing you see. Now, it wouldn't create traffic on Sea Cliff, because it's the fishermen, they're gonna be buying it while they're fueling up, so we're not concerned about that.
Why can't we do anything? You said we can't fix it up, we can only?
It's in the new floodplain. We can, some windows have been boarded up, we can put windows back in there, the same ones, we can improve them, we can paint it, we can probably put in new flooring, but it's beyond, if anything more is done to it, the whole thing has to come down and start all over, and we're not apt to do that. It's perfect for a bait shop in its current condition. So this was not our idea, this came to us, but we're starting, you know, to talk about.
Well, then the question becomes, you have somebody who's obviously proposing making it a bait shop, but then someone else who said if it's, if that's an option, they'd be happy to use it for a bait shop also, how do you determine who gets to use it?
Put it out for bid.
Put it out to bid. But I don't, see, here's a caveat, I don't wanna put out, I don't think we should put out, a bid, and ask them what they want to pay in rent for it. This is, this is my quandary, more than anything else. So that's where we need some guidance.
You could put it out for bid with a minimum.
Oh, that's a thought, yeah. And that minimum is?
What are we getting now?
Nothing. And for a comparison, we were getting 250 from Seventeen Turtles for a much better building. However, it's better because I'm told she put money into it, and that was taken into consideration with her rent.
She put about 18,000 in it?
Yeah, I had heard 10, but I know it was a good, a good amount. So it's A, is there any reason why you wouldn't want to open this up to a possibility? I mean, it's not gonna be huge revenue for the city, but it's an empty building, giving us nothing right now. And then B, Jimmy, you're in the banking business, what is it worth?
I mean, I'm just trying to think, you know, what's the timeline, we're looking at maybe doing something larger, I guess, larger scale with that property? What do we want to consider doing? What's the, what's the strategic plan for that property? How, how much energy is it worth, even doing this if we're only gonna do this for 12 or 18 months?
Well, then there's the other side of that coin. Moving the marina office into another mobile building, because it gets in another place, because it has a better vantage of the entire marina. Right now, it doesn't have a really good vantage point. So it's always in our plan to move the marina office out of there, this is temporary. This bait shop could then go into that building. There's been talk about people being interested in a fish market there as well, both can operate out of there. We go back to the bidding process at that point, and it's also higher rent district.
What are the potential ramifications, though, to some of the surrounding neighbors? I mean, you know, I think of a bait shop, is there, you know, are they gonna complain of it smelling, or there being issues with them operating it right there? Is that gonna be a concern?
I wouldn't think so.
I wouldn't think so, no. If there's any sort of odor or anything, it's already there with the, with the three marinas.
Fair point. Council?
I mean, I don't know what you would.
Partial, partial council?
I don't know what you would.
And I got no help from Jack and Kevin on this, I will tell you.
Good.
500 comes to mind.
That's kinda what comes to mind to me, but I don't even know if I would.
$6,000, is it?
Is it worth it if you, if you wanna go to?
How much city employee time is it gonna take to?
Yeah, and do you just go to?
What kind of condition was the condo in, because we added it based on square footage?
I'd have to go, I'd have to go back, and we've used it for film crews.
Right, but it's not, it wasn't in great, great shape.
No, uh-uh, no.
So maybe we can use that same square footage based on that size building.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that, it's an idea.
I don't know how much money there is in bait, that's why I'm wondering, is 500 too much? I mean, I just don't know enough.
Well, if you go down from there, then it really becomes not worth our right.
Yeah.
We're not gonna do anything to that building, it would be leased out as-is.
But I mean, what are the odds of, you know, what if we went to somebody and said, we're gonna just, we've got the marina in place, but we're gonna lease the rest of this out for you to run a boatyard again?
That becomes, those are options that will be presented to the council after the first of the year.
So we, I mean, what if we go, after the first of the year, we get some options, we say, yeah, let's do that, let's lease the whole thing out for a boatyard, then are we coming back to this person just a few months later and saying, sorry, you got all your stuff moved in, but?
We're closing up.
We're closing up?
Yeah. So you all have to vote to have it be a boatyard, in order for that to happen?
Well, if that's even a possibility, then, and we're not talking about a lot of revenue this year.
Wait till after the first of the year and lump it in with the, with the options that we're gonna discuss on that, I just, I just don't think there's enough financial gain to warrant tying down a one- or two-year lease, or even a year-to-year lease. If we, we decide to go a different route, you know, in January or February?
Makes sense to me.
That wouldn't be fair to, wouldn't be fair to somebody, I don't think.
Well, and if you're talking, I mean, whoever, it's, yeah, and it'd be unfair to whoever, we'd be potentially leasing the, I mean, if you talk about coming up with the specs for what we want from the property, if we decide to let them bid for it, then once we take the time to get the bids, you're talking after the new year anyway.
We're gonna be there.
Before anybody could get in, and if we're gonna be discussing potential options, it seems wasteful of their time to put them through that, if the possibility of pulling the rug out from under them exists.
That's fair. But it's still fair, then I'm hearing from you, that this is something that he could think about, a potential that he could think about and be prepared.
Yeah.
One way or the other, okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, thank you. The second issue down there is parking. You know, it was recently brought to our attention that there were two trailers and a skiff parked down near the covered slips. They belonged to long-term slipholders. Now, basically, without it being in writing, we have a lot of a parking space for, they're not delineated, but if you're a long-term slipholder, you're allowed to park your car down there, you get one space for that. We haven't talked about or accommodated more than that, nor do we want to become a parking lot. So basically, we told these folks, you know, using city property for free, we can't do that. That issue has been taken care of, they've moved the trailer and the skiff, they are out of there. But that means we need to address that in our rules and regs. And the recommendation that we're making is that long-term slipholders are allowed one parking space. After that, they would be parking a vehicle back on the north side near the fence, which is where cars used to park, until such time as a redesign of the marina, and then we will find other parking area, because a redesign will include parking. And that they would pay for it, plain and simple. We are not a parking lot, we're not there for free. Now, we started at $5, and then we got a recommendation of $15. I don't know what the right number is, but we don't want them parking there overnight, unless, of course, we have in our regulations, if you are leaving your slip for an extended trip, you have to let the marina manager know. We do that so that we can use that slip in their absence. But that would allow them to leave their one car parked there while they're gone. It's just the ancillary parking that we need to address. We're doing it not because it's a revenue stream, but rather, it keeps us neat, controls parking, and it keeps the ambiance that we're trying to develop. So my question to you is, I've given you the draft of the recommended amendment to the rules and regs, if you like the idea, the concept, we'll set up an amendment to the resolution for the next meeting, but we need some guidance on what you think is fair to charge for parking. I am of the mind that $5 is sufficient for the day. Do not leave it overnight, but that's up to you.
And Marcus, I don't imagine there's any issue with charging for public, for parking in public property?
Is it, is it, I'm leasing this space, or is it, I've just gotta write, park in this lot? Because if it's, right now, it's public property, and you're effectively leasing, if you're saying, you're an owner, you get a spot, you're paying, I'm looking at this, and you may be in the same position as leasing it out. And it's not, you're a dedicated spot like this?
No, they're not dedicated, and there's no guarantee that if you're a live aboard or a long-term slipholder, there's no guarantee that you're, the spot where you get to park your cars anywhere near your boat. But we don't want you and your 10 friends parking cars down there.
Overnight, but if you're going on out on a boat, is there any prohibition against that?
We don't have anything in the rules for it.
I mean, but in that kind of, I mean, I don't know, that just seems like a little, it's, one, it's hard and four, unless you got stickers. I mean, you can make it like, you know, the duck pond area, but then you're looking at, you know, residents, we just hang tag, get this, everybody else has to pay extra $100 to come park here.
Were you having a lot of problem then, there were people parking? I mean, is that, what precipitated this?
I won't say a lot of problem, but all of a sudden, there were trailers that were there for an extended period of time. One, it's all of his tools, he was working on his boat, and he just left his trailer there and come down and work on his boat. The other one, he's a lawyer.
You gotta watch those guys.
Yeah, gotta watch them. He had his skiff and his trailer parked there, and figured he was just gonna leave them there.
I think, I think with regard to that, there's no problem, you know, making regulations, no trailers, no overnight trailers, no, you know, overnight parking, whatever it may be, but it would have to apply to the old parking lot. I don't know how you get one area that you know, like, the trailer thing, I don't think that's a problem, you know, no parking in trailers. You know, no parking of trailers overnight is part of your rules and regulations. It would effectively apply to the whole parking lot, I would think.
Right.
It doesn't, it just doesn't encompass, right down there by the water, the slips that are very close. Leasing the parking, I don't know how you charge a hunkai once or something and then me or anybody else can go down there and walk the dock and not pay money to go, you know? That's what I'm saying.
You say, long-term parking and check with Marina manager and notice there's a trailer or something there for, you know, a couple of days. Put a lock on the tire and make him come to the office and say.
Yeah, you could, there could be an ordinance in place that, you know, effectively gives police rights if it's parked there over 24 hours that, you know, can be ticketed, something that affect, without notice to the Marina management. But when you've got abandoned vehicle issues that we can deal with. But that could be a, a missed ordinance violation, issue of citation.
Okay, let's go back to the drawing boards.
Well, I think you, I think you have the bulk of it. Good. And I think the bulk, that are no trailers, add that to the rules and regulations.
Glenn, you knew I was going to bring up potential legal issues.
Well, of course.
I don't know any other way to do it.
I'm not the lawyer, I just got ideas.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't have any problem with what you're, what you're presenting in theory, as long as there is some functional application, fair and functional application, that doesn't get us any.
Right. Or make it, you know, slipholders' personal work yard.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think what you're trying to prevent is correct. We just got to make sure this is drafted in a way that captures that but doesn't unfairly or unjustly punish someone that we're not intending to do.
Right, because, you know, now that we're talking about it, we will have the liveabords. We only have five down there, but their cars will be parked overnight, obviously. And that's not the issue.
All right. Yeah, and I think kind of what Marcus was saying, if there's some, or what Robert, I think, mentioned is no 24-hour parking unless, without special permission of the Marina manager. And then if somebody is there without some tag that we give them with 24-hour permission, then they can be ticketed, booted, whatever it is.
That's what I was just thinking, there's condos like down Orange Beach. If you take your boat down there, they give you a little fluorescent thing, zip tie to put on your boat trailer while you're checked into the condo. So if somebody checks into the Marina and they've got a trailer or a car, are they going to be there overnight? You just give them a little thing to put on their mirror, you know, rearview mirror, zip it on their boat trailer to know they've checked in and they're legit.
Okay, let's see what we can come up with.
All right.
Okay.
Glenn, you had one more thing you wanted to discuss?
I do have one more thing I wanted to bring up. And since there are only the three of you here, this would be appropriate place, not during the meeting. You have, you're going to be approving the amended agenda, or the amended budget tonight. And I wanted to address one issue in particular on that. And that is, you know, I don't generally get involved in the budget process, but I do have these two special big projects, the Marina and the golf course. This time, I do want to speak up about the golf course and the request for the one additional full-time employee and the, our willingness to eliminate, defund two part-timers and one seasonal employee to help make up for having a full-timer. We do have two part-time positions that we haven't been able to fill in a year. People don't want to work part-time, they want full-time. And those few who do apply for the part-time, they're not qualified to operate the equipment that we have out there, and they're not skilled to handle the work that needs to be done. And we're not a seasonal business, believe it or not. We're open 364 days a year. And the course needs to be cared for, 365. You don't get a knowledge base that's needed, and you don't get the equipment operation that's needed with part-timers or seasonal workers. So what, the crew's done the best that they can with what we have, and I've got to commend them for it. We've gotten an awful lot done this year. Jeff's really done a super job with the guys. But it means taking our mechanic off of his responsibilities and putting him on a mower in the fairway, and that takes time away from the equipment and cart maintenance, which doesn't make much sense. We have targeted certain course improvement projects, like reclaiming a detention pond and cleaning and opening up for air movement, and overall course enhancement, a very snakey area that is bordered by three of the holes. And it could be something phenomenal and great for the course, but right now, it's just a big mess. Those are projects we have, we want to get done. We are maintaining the property across the street, not what you see visually while we do that, but behind that, if you'll remember, there's acreage that's supposed to be another nine holes. That may never happen, but in the meantime, that property does border Quail Creek residents. And we have to maintain and know that as well, so it doesn't become a mess. Then in addition to that, we are taking on more and more of the tree trimming because the contract was, the city contract was canceled. So now we're doing all of the ongoing tree work that we need to do on a regular basis to maintain the healthy fairways, healthy turf for the fairways and the greens. What we're asking for, what it amounts to is a $16,000 difference, which with our budget is sort of a drop in the bucket, but would easily be made up from the fact that we are no longer paying to have the tree work done that we do on a regular basis. But we're having problems maintaining the way, the condition and the way we want that course maintained. We've got fairways to mow, we've got greens to mow. We have gardens out there to take care of. We have the clubhouse landscaping to take care of. It's all being done with a short staff. And we can get more out of one full-time person than two part-time people because that, the schedules are easier to fix, the projects are easier to get started and to keep running on. So I just want to put that out there. We're going to keep asking for it. But with only the three of you here tonight, it wouldn't be fair to the other two members to push it this evening. But I did want you to know that we're thinking about it, and that's our rationale. You were great, you saw that rationale with the Marina. It works also for the golf course.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the fact that it's hard to fill part-time roles, especially with, sometimes with the skill that you need to fill those positions. I personally would prefer to work part-time, but with full-time pay. And I don't bring the requisite skill either, but, but I understand that. And with the, you know, balance that you're talking about with defunding the other, or giving up the other positions, you know, you make it at least close enough that really makes you consider, you know, that as an option. I personally don't have a problem with it, but as I told you before the meeting, I don't, you know, unless Jimmy and Robert feel differently, you know, we spent so much time, you know, having these discussions on the budget in meetings with everybody here. I'd hate to make a change like this right before we approve it without everybody having the opportunity to speak on it. And so that would be my only, my only hesitancy in going ahead and, you know, saying yes tonight. But if they feel differently, I'll be happy to listen.
Sorry for not replying to your email.
It's okay.
Yeah, I mean, and I hear what you're saying about the full-time versus the part-time. I get that rationale. But I, and I've heard a lot of compliments about the way the course looks, and kudos to Jeff and his guys out there. But when I put my budget hat on, looking at, you know, what the golf courses loses annually, it's hard to add more full-time people. And that's not a slight to you or anybody else out there to golf, it's just a function of what we're providing. And how much more people do we put out there? I mean, what's the, what would be the temperature of raising the course fees out there?
Oh, you'll be hearing from us soon on that.
Unless we start raising fees out there, I'm not comfortable with putting more people out there. That's my stance.
Okay, well, I will tell you that that is something that we're talking about now. That is a function of the council. When you gave the permission to the pro to do the cart fees and that sort of thing, you maintained the right to raise membership fees. They haven't been raised in seven years. So we will be bringing to you a recommendation on doing that. And I will tell you, Robert, some people are sick and tired of me telling them that I've run a golf course as a neophyte. That's one of those things I fell into. Your cost center is always your maintenance. But if you don't maintain that course, you don't get the business. And with golf in a downward trend, and we're running 35,000 rounds, we're doing good. And we want to make sure that we keep doing good. And the maintenance of the course is what's going to keep our business going. I, I don't know, we're not in a position, in all honesty, to tell you that, you know, the business from the clubhouse is going to cover everything because I don't think it ever will in this case. This is something that we're offering our citizens. Our rates are low, and that's why we have the traffic that we have, so we have to balance that. But course maintenance will always cost you. But we're working on the other, the other half of that scenario. So you will see that shortly.
And I don't expect, you know, raising the fees or cart fees or anything is going to make it balanced, but it needs to be looked at, in my opinion.
Yeah, I can promise you it is being looked at.
And I was just going to add, I do think of this as an amenity for the citizens. I don't really think of it as being a profit center. But what, what are some other, I would love to see some other municipalities or other areas that have, have a similar municipal course that aren't, aren't in it to necessarily turn a profit. But what is a level of reasonable loss or funding that you do? I mean, we're looking at 721,000 for 2020, and I'm wondering, what is a good number that you say, you know what? We're doing this for the citizens, we're making it affordable. Golf country clubs are really expensive, and not everybody can do that. We want to have something where people can play that's reasonable. But how much are you willing to lose on a year-over-year basis that's a reasonable, acceptable amount, I guess?
We can check certainly with the other municipal courses in the state. I will tell you that where we suffer as a municipal course is we don't have that monthly dues. Monthly dues that comes from semi-private or private courses. That's what is your bread and butter and what covers your course maintenance. Everything after that, your tournaments and your special events take care of the rest of it. We don't have that monthly dues. That's why what our membership, our annual membership fee is expected to cover, but it doesn't yet. And I'm not sure that it ever will because we're going to be very judicious about how much it is.
I'd be curious to know the answer to Jimmy's question as far as what, you know, if municipal golf courses are not expected to make a profit, what is an acceptable or, you know, reasonable loss in that circumstance?
I'd rather call it a cost. Cost of doing business.
Right, that sounds better.
We will check into that and get some numbers for you. I'll let you know. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. That is all of the items on the agenda. Jimmy, Robert, you have any committee updates?
I had a meeting this morning with the Historic Preservation Committee. Just as a reminder to council, that, that committee was formed with the, really the sole purpose of making a recommendation to the council as to whether or not we should form a Historic Preservation Commission. And obviously, they're in favor of that and support of that. And they're going to be bringing forward again some revised proposed ordinance at some point to have us consider. And the primary reason for forming a Historic Preservation Commission would be that that's one of the first steps required in becoming a certified legal government or CLG. And that's what opens the door to receiving some funding for historic preservation. And I think that people in Fairhope want to see historic properties preserved, but they're also very, very conscious of property owners' rights here. So I think that finding that fine, that fine line and that balance between preserving some of our history, but doing it in a way that, that isn't, you know, holding sort of a police, police angle over people, what they can and can't do with their property. And we're just trying to navigate that, but something we'll be coming forward to the council in the, in the near future.
Anything else, Jim?
Got a library meeting coming up, I think, next Monday, I think, next Monday. And Environmental Advisory Board, I missed that when I was out of town on Friday. So I've got some minutes from that, but I'll have to read that and give an update next time.
Robert?
Yeah, so next meeting, I'll have two resolutions, and we'll get with Lisa on one from the PED Bike Committee. We had Bob Terrabella from the Sunset Rotary come to our meeting last week and talk to us. And I believe we discussed it before in a meeting about the handicap mat down at the public beach to allow wheelchair access out onto the public beach. They've got the funding in place. The Rotary Club just looking for a resolution from the council committee in support of it. The committee is in support, and I'll get a resolution at least for the next meeting. And the Education Advisory Committee, as you know, with the passing of the Special Tax District for the schools, there has to be the formation of a Fairhope Public School Commission, nine members. So they're looking to dissolve the EAC with the formation of the Fairhope Public School Commission at the same time, starting in January of 2020. And the documents have been drafted by the school board attorney saying so, and that the Fairhope Public School Commission will also take over the role that the EAC would have with the $300,000 annual payment to the school board for the purchase of the K-1 Center. So that would be part of their duties as well as overseeing that money from the Special Tax District. So anyway, those two resolutions will be on the next meeting.
Any thoughts on how the appointment, appointment process will work for that session?
The nine people would be appointed by the council. There are six people that are currently on the Education Advisory Committee that would like to be on that first commission, be on a one- to three-year term. And then I think there's four people that have submitted applications and the EAC felt, in fairness, just take the first three applicants for that commission. So they felt it was important to have a continuity with having at least, you know, those six people that are currently on it seeing the transition to this new school commission.
Okay. I'm actually missing the reg board meeting, it's right now. I thought, seeing that we were down, down two already, that it was important that I be here. And then we have Christmas parade committee next week, so everybody get, start getting excited for the Christmas parade. But other than that, I don't have any other committee updates. Department head updates, come one, come all.
You're supposed to call it out, Jay.
Yeah, I like, I like this to be a volunteer effort.
Good evening. We've got two wastewater projects underway. I'm sure y'all familiar with them, and I just want to express the appreciation for having to move forward with these things. But there are some inconveniences that are involved, and please, you know, constituents, call and complain. I'll be happy to talk to any of them, but we're doing the best we can. We've created a little detour around the lift station project on Fells or Mobile Street. And we're going to deal with certain detours along Fairhope Avenue, Bayou, Fairwood Avenue, as we do each of these directional bore sections with that project. You know, we just ask for patience, and if anybody needs to talk to anybody about it, they're welcome to call me. I'll be happy to talk to them. And, you know, we've also responded to some water leaks lately. I think there was one today, and one on Merchan. You may see some construction, you know, pavement that's not quite finished being repaired yet. But we're working hard and doing the best we can. You know, we'll keep moving forward and try to get better. If y'all got any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Richard, Jeff, didn't you have something you wanted us to walk on tonight?
Yeah, we bid the site work for the substation work at Nichols and Young Thursday, a week ago, the 31st. And we, we thought we processed the necessary paperwork going through to meet a deadline for this agenda, but somehow we didn't quite make that deadline. If at all possible, I would appreciate being able to. If at all possible, I would appreciate being able to move forward with that and getting done. But if you have any questions about that.
Do we have a resolution for that, Lisa?
Yes, there is one.
Okay. I don't have any problems walking in.
Thank you. Anything?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
One is the department update, and others, a little grant discussion. As you may be aware, we actually had a little cold snap last night.
Felt it?
About eight hours below freezing, even though we tried to take protective measures and cover as many of the plant flower beds as we could. We had a pretty much total loss of our fall flowers. Paul Merchant came to me today, he felt like it was his fault. I said, well, you didn't cause it to freeze, and we did everything we can. So, just kind of giving you an update. Normally, our change out for the winter flower starts the first week of December. We're going to clean up the losses in the beds. The good news is our bordering plants are great, they're ready to go. Our infill plants that bloom are very healthy and are ready to go. They just hadn't started blooming yet. And normally, the plan was that by the time we stuck them in the ground around the first December, they had the blooms. The biggest thing is whether you know about poinsettias or not. Poinsettias have to be kept in the dark for a requisite period of time for their leaves to actually change the colors of red or gold, depending on what variety they are. If not, they just stay green, believe it or not, they're a tropical plant. So, they're being deprived of light right now, but they were needing two more weeks of it before the colors need to be. So, we are going to start the change out early. It is going to be a little more phased. Instead of you, one's gone and a brand one's new, the next day, it's going to be borders and then infill, and then eventually, the poinsettias introduced. But that's the reason why. And we discussed that we could try to go on the market and buy some mature plants to bridge the two and a half weeks. But I'm not sure that's the best use of efforts and dollars when we have plants in the greenhouse that are either ready or close to being ready, or will be ready by that time. And the pure fact, for lighting of the trees, all those flower beds in that location get stomped flat. So, we're going to leave those empty until after lighting of the trees. We just don't want to put brand-new plants that could be damaged by the pedestrians enjoying the event. The other thing is, and this has been kind of one of these slow rollouts. As you know, we had an opportunity, we won an ATRIP II grant of nearly a million dollars for intersection improvements at Twin Beach and US 98. That was a result of the gas tax that was approved. Well, there's, it's kind of like an infomercial, wait, there's more. There is another part of that called the Rebuild Alabama Act, which is a 250,000 no-match transportation-related grant, meaning it can be used on any public city road. The deadline, of course, they gave us all 30 days notice, is the end of this month. The two things came to thought, and one of them is problematic, and I've talked with Marcus about, but as you know, for downtown pedestrian safety improvements, one of the projects that we put on hold, that we've designed, is traffic common and intersection improvements at Fairhope and Fairwood. The problem is, it's designed, but our construction estimates are more than 250,000, which is what the, you just get 250,000 for your project if you're selected. No more, it doesn't, you know, you've got to do the engineering, they're just going to give you 250,000 toward construction. But the fact that we've already got the engineering in the can makes it an ideal candidate. The other was the same improvements, intersection at Johnson and Delamar. Marcus says that that's an issue. I don't quite get that if we're improving a public right away, regardless of whose corner it's on, if not relevant to me as a work director. That one was right at estimate of about $250,000, which we have designed. The other one that we've talked about internally and we've had some conversations is a sidewalk on Fairwood in the median that runs, basically, at least make the goal to get from Fairhope to Bayou and tie in down there. That is something I think we could design in-house. It would be a good project. I don't know if there's $250,000 with the sidewalk, but if we come up and we think it can be built for 150, that may make us a more attractive candidate, because they're going to try to give as many grants as possible. I'm looking for feedback. We don't need a resolution to make this application, since it is, if we get picked, they're going to say, you've got this much money to apply toward a project. Thoughts?
So, we've already gotten and approved the one.
That's here on the north section street, yes, two crossings, yes.
To me, was obviously the most pressing from a safety standpoint.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you from a bike ped liaison, ped bike, sorry, Lisa, ped bike, that that sidewalk on Fairwood is a high priority for kids, you know, getting to school. You know, their sidewalks were coming down Fairwood Avenue each direction. If there was a multi-use trail or something down that median.
A nice six-foot, nice, yeah, healthy pathway, yeah.
That's high on their list.
I think we could at least get a conceptual layout, get dollars assigned to it, and get an application. The good news is, the application is not real owners. It's just what is the project, where is the project, the details of it, and what you think the cost is.
Have we already gotten money for the Fairhope and Fairwood cross section?
No, that one got set aside because of the sewer improvements. We know that intersection is going to be impacted. We didn't want to have a project improvement when we know we're going to have to do some tearing up. So, it was going to be one of those things that, in the future, we're going to look at again. The problem is, I mean, I think it'd be a good candidate, because we have some real good definition of what that project is as far as design and cost. But again, that, the sidewalk's a high priority, too. I've heard the same, so I'm just looking for guidance.
I say let it rip, I think that sounds great.
Okay. And I'm going to be realistic, since this is all tied to that same, and we got chose for the first round for the million dollars, I don't think we have a great chance, but I don't want to miss the opportunity, at least, to put the ask out there.
You don't know, if you don't ask.
That's right. All right, thank you.
Safety of the kids, Richard.
Yeah.
Just a couple of things real quick, let y'all know, we've got three of our new power transformers in. We got the two for the Nichols site, and one of the two for Twin Beach. The second one at Twin Beach had some issues, so they basically had to disassemble it, and now they're rebuilding it. And then we're going to go out for witnessing, testing on it, since they had an issue, make sure everything's good, get a report for that, and make sure the first one doesn't have the same systematic type of condition. It's a good manufacturer, I have no doubt that the equipment's good. It's just, you know, they have a 4% failure rate, and ours happen to be one of the 4%. Other than that, I have a couple of things on the agenda, I didn't know if you had any questions for those or not. One of them was, already talked about.
Looking for a little bit of money.
Yeah, the tree trimming, that bid came in way higher than what we anticipated. So, we're talking, Richard Johnson and I had a couple of conversations, talking about a couple of different options for tree trimming moving forward. And then, obviously, the big one for our construction. But that, remember, that's over three fiscal years, so starting this fiscal year and then 2021.
So, number 12 is we're rejecting the bids for vegetation management.
Correct. So, yeah, we're going to look at our options, either split it into once every four years, or a couple of different options. But I'm not ready to bring anything to y'all yet, we're still looking at it, and what's the most economically viable way to do it? Cool, that's all I have. Thanks.
Good evening. So, we have two things on our agenda tonight related to the ADA complacency of the football stadium to approve the architect, architectural rendering and the engineering of the project. The trick after this is going to be bidding it out and getting it done in the timeframe that is going to fit according to our events. Because we will have semi-pro football kicking off this year in conjunction with high school soccer at the same time this spring. So, I don't know that we can fit it in in that timeframe, and then we have graduation in May. So, really, our downtime of the football stadium is June and July, and our first football game started in August. So, my understanding is going to be a 90-day contract. So, we're going to have, you know, some hurdles to jump there to make it work in our timeframe.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
Okay, so, wanted to update you guys on something that you approved last February. It was for the IMBA, which is the International Mountain Viking Association. It was for them to do a feasibility study for trails on the Triangle property. The good news is, we have that moving now. We should have all of the contracts executed by the end of the month, so that we can begin that process, hopefully in January. That was the ideal time for them to do that feasibility study, because, you know, vegetation is lower, and things are colder, snakes are hopefully not moving around quite so much. So, wanted to let you know that that is coming, so we see progress there. Also, don't forget that next, or Friday, from 3:00 to 4:30 at the museum is our 125th anniversary party. We would love to see all of you there, we'd love to see the public there as well. Around 3:30, we'll have a small program, by small, I mean 10 minutes tops. Come get a cupcake and enjoy watching the Friends of the Museum walk around in their peri-dress. It should be a fun time, so, that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much.
So, in my hiding of a column, I hid the gas fund, okay? Because we don't need gas. So, if y'all could replace those.
Anybody else? Is that Eric? LSU guy? No LSU fans? Congratulations, Eric.
I had so much to do with it, you know, but thank you.
Joe Tagas.
All right, that's it for department head updates. Let's look at the agenda. For those of you that don't know, and that are going to be here for the meeting, numbers six and seven were pulled till next meeting at the request of the.
Owners.
Of the owners. And number 10 is being pulled to make some changes, and will be presented at the next, also be put on the next agenda. Five is a public hearing, we'll have, we can talk about that. Number eight is final adoption of the on-call employees. You guys got any more questions about that at this point? Nine is going to be a resolution for approval of the budget. 11 is, this is approving the request, but it's more of a renewal for the, I guess, the leasing of the trees or the sponsoring of the trees that we did last year with Fairhope Sunset Rotary. Jessica, I guess, are there any questions? Is that something that you'd be answering? Number 11?
Okay, then we will ask you several then.
I think it's pretty self-explanatory, it's similar to what we did last year. Number 12, we've already talked about that. 13 and 14 are for the ADA compliance of the stadium. 14 is one of the electrical upgrades we discussed. 16 is the fiber optic internet services. You're going to be here to talk about that? You want to come up now?
Yeah.
Yeah, before I get to you, Jeff, number 14 is going to be amended. It says, the agenda said $14,000, but it's really $14,900, so we'll reflect that at the meeting.
Okay, so, let's see, item 16, that's the internet service upgrade. Put a bid out, Harbor Communications came back with the lowest bid of $900 a month for a 1 gigabit per second service, and we're upgrading from 150 megabits per second right now. So, we've been kind of hobbling it along. And just needed the extra bandwidth, because we've got all of our police units that are mobile, using VPN connections to connect back to the city, as well as some sewer lift stations, and a lot of remote users coming in. And plus, we've got a lot of data going out for external backups, and our connection is just way too slow to handle all this traffic, so we're going to go ahead and bump it up. And the way things work out is actually this gigabit per second connection is actually cheaper than our 150 meg connection that we're paying now. So, I think we came out good with that.
This is budget?
Yes.
Guys, any questions? That's it?
Okay, and I've got also item 17. Mayor asked if we can come up with ways to save money, you know, when we go into the budget. And this is one of the solutions that I proposed, that we move away from our own-premise telephone system and let a company come in and provide telephone services for the city. So, we put a bid out, got three responses. Harbor Communications, we chose. It ended up being $3,590 per month. And if you calculate what we're paying now for our on-premise services, dealing with our hardware support, our backups, or to pay AT&amp;T for lines and support on the telephone system, we're paying approximately $5,830 a month right now. So, the monthly fee is actually cheaper if we go with Harbor Communications. Plus, this year, I had in the budget to spend a pretty, I think it was around $30,000 to $40,000 to upgrade our telephones, because our telephones haven't been replaced in a while, and they've gotten to the point now where they're no longer getting firmware updates. So, I was going to have to replace telephones, so I don't have to have that extra cost. Everything is just kind of, it's just a provided service. So, it works out to about $17 per user to have Harbor Communications come in. So, that bill may, this amount is based on 200 users, so that may fluctuate. It may go up and go down, depending on how many users we have, you know, utilizing desktop telephones. Plus, Harbor Communications, they do, other municipalities in the area, and they have experience dealing with police dispatch. They understand the importance of keeping them up and running 24 hours, 24 by 7, how important, you know, the dispatch centers are. Where right now is, you know, we've got a system on premise. If something goes wrong, it's up to my team to quickly try to figure out what's going on. Sometimes we have to pull in external support to help us out. And just trying to minimize downtime with dispatch, because it's just, you know, very critical that they have telephones at work all the time. So, just by having this expertise of Harbor Communications coming in, I think we'd be better off in the long run. Plus, it's cheaper, so I mean, it's a win-win, in my opinion.
Any questions, council?
And they'll be here during the council meeting if you have any questions about their service.
Probably a lot of technical issues that we'd have to discuss, probably.
If you want to, they'd be more than happy to.
Kevin, those are IT group.
Right.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Number 18 is a resolution for the erosion control and stabilization. Is that you, Richard?
As you know, when we originally opened this bid, we went back and did some value engineering and got it down a considerable amount from the original bid opening. And one of the items that we valued and engineered out was some bank protection and overflow protection, and with the hope that we would successfully get vegetation established quickly. That didn't happen, you know, so the recommendation is, we've got to permanently protect that over bank, or we're going to have some continued damage. Here's the good news, is right now, there's $66,000 left in that budget that has not been spent. But because the vegetation, they have to come back and get that planted this time. It's going to happen in the wintertime to give it the best chance of success. We kept the change order cost in there, because if we end up getting into that expense that we need to to make it right, we don't want to have to come back a second time. So, that's where that is. My goal is, is that we never spend this $24,000. We can get everything accomplished in what we still have left in the original budget, so.
You like that idea?
Yeah, well, I like that idea, too, so.
Thank you. Questions, guys? Thank you, Richard. The next is a change order for the well abventive services. Who's going to be?
I can guess maybe. So, just reading through the notes, and I did a grid sheet on it, is that they got down to, I guess, the semis. And, you know, they called me in the middle of this, and I told them, you know, if you got a stop, let's go back. So we went ahead and had them finish the project, and it ended up running over.
Okay.
And when I went back and looked at when it was originally bid, that $6,000 still didn't go over what the next bidder was.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kim. That does answer some questions, I appreciate it. All right, number 20, that is what we discussed in our budget meetings. That is the temporary help to cover our special events coordinator. And I guess, Jessica, if there is any questions about that, you can answer those. 21 is, the way I understand it is someone to, we have someone leaving in January, and they want someone to go ahead and come in now to spend the month of December with them to get them trained up to speed, so come January, when that employee leaves, that new hire is ready to go. So you're essentially authorizing a one-month additional employee, which?
Two months to hire for mine.
Got it.
I mean, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. And so, you know, if you've got any questions about that, we can get it answered, but it seems pretty simple. 22 and 23 are just run-of-the-mill acceptance of utilities and right-of-ways, but Buford will be here to answer questions about that if we have them. 24 is a tree committee appointment. 25 is a request for the 2.5K run. Jessica, if there are any questions about that, is that you or is that police ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. I don't imagine there will be, but. And then chief, number 26, any issues with that? Everything in order?
Yes.
All right. Well, that is it, so we will adjourn the work session.